I'd like to call this meeting, the Alexander County Board of Commissioners into session. And at this time Chairman Yoder and myself, I will do the indication. The pledge of allegiance will be Commissioner Milton Campbell. If you'd please rise, please.
Kind and most gracious heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity that you've given us that we were able to gather here tonight. Lord, we'd ask that you would look after our military personnel, both home and abroad. Be with those law enforcement officers in Dallas, Texas, with the horrific things that happened there this weekend, and thankfully that no lives were lost, and that no civilians were injured or anyone came under attack other than law enforcement, and they were able to handle the situation and take care of it. Be with all the law enforcement personnel, our emergency personnel, and be with each one who is here tonight and those across the nation, that they live the life that you'd asked them to live. Amen.
Turn, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Gentlemen, you have the agenda before you're there. You've had the opportunity to take a look at it, the entertaining motion to approve the agenda as is, and we'll have a lady that'll be speaking to us here in just a moment on the Rocky Face Park.
A move to approve the agenda as listed?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. And now, we have a special guest from the Rocky Face Park, and she is going to tell us everything there is about this special award, and tell us how great it is. And she told me she's gonna talk at least 10 minutes.
No.[142.12][142.12](laughing) It will take but a minute. Thank you for having me. Alexander County has been recognized with a national award, an achievement award from the National Association of Counties for its role in the development of Rocky Face Park. The National Association of Counties is a national organization that represents county governments all across the United States. The awards honor innovative, effective county government programs that enhance services for residents. Nationally, awards were given in 21 different categories, which reflect all the different services that county provide. 10 counties in North Carolina earned an achievement award, with 35 total awards given across the state. Rocky Face Park received one of only five in the state in the parks and recreation category. Here is a 30-second video that Chad has that will be promoted on the National Association of Counties' social media channels, as well as Alexander County's. Rocky Face Mountain Recreational Area is located in beautiful Alexander County, in the foothills of western North Carolina. Once an overgrown rock quarry, Rocky Face Mountain was transformed into a popular destination for rock climbers, hikers, and nature enthusiasts. Spanning over 300 acres, with 60 rock climbing routes, five miles of hiking trails, a picnic shelter, geocaching, and more, Rocky Face Park has something for everyone. For more information, visit rockyfacepark.com. And that's the video.[251.31][251.31](laughing)
The video, short and to the point.
Yeah.
Very good.
They wanted it to be about 30 seconds, so... And like I said, that'll be promoted on their social media channels and Alexander County's as well. So we're very proud to have this award. It's shown how far Rocky Face has really come.
And this will bring a tremendous amount of national attention.
It will.
Especially since the association's meeting's going to be held in Charlotte this year, and it'll help Alexander County to get this tremendous publicity. And Mrs. Stamen, I'd like to say thank you very much for what you do at Rocky Face Park, and the things that you do to continue to make it a progress for... It's still in working stages. It's still being... It's still growing, and you're doing a tremendous job out there, and we appreciate you and your staff for the efforts that y'all put forward out there at the park.
Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for anybody?
Just congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Thank you. Item number one on the agenda tonight is the 2015-16 Alexander County Budget Discussion. Mr. French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over the last, really over the last couple of months, we have discussed the 2015-2016 budget, and we have, in great detail, in the last, I guess, three weeks, had numerous meetings and discussed a proposal to increase our local budget by 12 and 1/2 cents, which would take our 2015-2016 budget to... The number that we were talking about, discussing before, was 37,733,376 dollars. Our new number is 37,619,658 dollars. But regardless of that, it's still, we've talked about 12 and 1/2 cent increase. With that, there are no new positions. There's a number of items which we've talked about, which part of that is from the Golden Leaf Grant match for the sewer, for Sure Tape Industry, to the cost of purchasing ambulances or SUVs for the Sheriff's Department and other things. In the last week or so, we've had some discussions. Several of the commissioners have talked with me about trying to look at, and you know there's been concern about the tax, the 12 and 1/2 percent, 12 and 1/2 cents proposed tax rate, and we've talked about even a 10 cents tax rate. I just don't know if that cuts it too close, which that sounds crazy in the scheme of things, considering we're going from, we'd be going from 66.5 to 76.5. But keep in mind that revenue-neutral tax rate is 68.7 cents. And there's some other things that we talk about as we talk about the budget. We talk about water rates, and with water rates, we've talked about a 1% increase, and also restructuring of Bethlehem rates plus the 1%, which is the 1% is what Sea of Hickory is increasing the rates, the water rates to us. We've talked about fire tax rates, and we've reviewed those a couple of times, and those would stand as is. I think that sort of speaks for itself, and those are also recommended by our emergency services director. In solid waste, we've talked about increasing the landfill fees, and after looking at it for some time, I think we could probably get the same bang for our buck if we reduced the $1 fee that we have for recycling. It would have the same net effect revenue-wise, and then we would, the tipping fees would stay where they are. So that would, I think that would be, overall would be a plus. So there wouldn't be a dollar for recycling. It would encourage people to, they'd basically charge a dollar per bag, which is how we've done it, have basically done it in the past. All of you have had, I've given you a number of different budgets and information to look at, a lot of information to look at. And I guess, since we're here to discuss the 15-16 budget, first I'd like to ask if is there any questions?
Mr. French, I guess my question to you is that if this board decides to do a 12.5 versus a 10 cent, is that going to be able to... At 12.5, it'll take care of the things that need to be taken care of. This is what I'm trying to say.
Yes, sir.
The 10 cent, will it cover it?
No, sir.
So if we pass 10 cents, if we pass 10 cents tonight and do that, then there's no way, then there's a possibility that next year we'd have to come back and ask for more. Is that correct?
You know, I... Certainly with 12 and 1/2 cents, you're in better, you're in better position. We'd be probably in a better position to even get our fund balance, even maybe possibility of even adding to our fund balance as opposed to 10. 10 really, even though that sounds crazy in the scheme of things, it'll really be a stretch, and we will not be able to replace some of the items we talked about replacing. And we will have to replace some of those items. I mean, the business that we're in, either whether it's in the emergency service or whatever field it's in, there's always equipment that you have to replace when you get so many miles on it. So whether it's an ambulance, or a police car, or whatever it is. So certainly 12 and 1/2 percent, 12 and 1/2 cents is better overall for the long-term...
On 12 and 1/2 cent tax increase, do you feel like in doing that, the budget we have now, that we could look at this budget as being a two-year budget and maintain?
I think so, yes, sir.
I mean, that's one more challenge to that. Instead of a two-year budget, any chance next year, we could actually lower our spending? You know, we've talked about several initiatives, looking at every single vendor contract that we have, and get it rebid, look at any strategic partnerships we have to see if there's any value in those, or if it's...
Yeah, I think it's a possibility. We just need to look at a lot of different things, and I'll certainly need your help. There's a number of items where we have opportunities, there always is, but there's a number of opportunities we have in the budget, or should have in the budget, that we could talk about, which, there's a lot of pieces, you know, in the county budget. The one thing that, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen, is what's gonna happen with the legislature and how that's gonna impact us, but we all understand that. Currently, the sales tax bill that's being discussed, the one that seems to have the most, I guess, or distraction, is something that deals with, it would be an increase in revenue, but we also lose hold harmless, which is half a million dollars. So I'm not so sure in the scheme of things where you end up. It'll offer, it offers one half-cent sales tax, and you can do it in two quarters, and we would have to do it a quarter, another, we've already done the first quarter, so the second, there'd be a quarter cent there. So there's an opportunity there, I guess, for something to help us.
But is that not gonna be effective 2019, from what I read?
It's gonna be phased in over five years, so it's not gonna be anything that's gonna help us next year, but it would be the year after that, possibly. And again, it's proposed, so we don't know how that'll play out.
Well, it's gonna be a proposed thing. There's also two opportunities in there, if I'm not mistaken, in this bill that's gonna allow counties an opportunity to do a quarter cent sales tax, or find some different way that they can do some type of sales tax, will come back to the counties themselves.
We've already done one of the quarter cents.
Right, we did one of them back in, what, 2007?
Something, yes, sir.
Yeah, I believe that's right. 2007, we did the quarter cent sales tax.
And we did that, well, we did it before we got into the Medicaid reform stuff.
Right.
I also have the discussion about detention and law enforcement center and all that stuff, which we don't have to rehash, but certainly if you do 12 and 1/2 cents, you're in better shape.
But basically, none of that has passed yet, though.
That's correct. That's what I'm saying. None of that has passed. So we don't know what will pass, if anything will pass.
Yeah.
There's mixed reviews about the whole thing.
Right.
The quarter cent, we would have to have a referendum.
That's what they say.
And before, the one thing to remember about quarter cent is, and not that this is... Currently, a quarter cent generates about $350,000. That's what it generates. So...
Deal changer.
It's not, yeah. It's not even a penny and a half. I mean, it's a lot of money, but it's, and it's all important. So, and again, there's been several sales taxes strategies discussed, two on the Senate side, I believe, and one on the House.
Right.
Actually, I'm... Go ahead.
Can I ask a quick question? And I just wanna check my numbers here. Well, two questions. A lot of people may not understand what revenue-neutral tax rate is when you mention 2.7 cents, so could you give a explanation of that, so that your average person understands what we're talking about?
Sure. 2.7 cents, that revenue-neutral generates the same amount of revenue as it would at 66.5 cents. It's the same amount of revenue generated, and that's due to the revaluation of property values.
Right. Property values went down.
Went down.
Property values went down, so basically, the average tax bill, if you add 2 and 1/2 cents to the property tax rate, then the average tax bill would be the same as it was last year.
Right.
If your tax bill was $500 last year, if you add 2 and 1/2, 2.76 cents to the tax rate this year, then it'd be $500 this year. Now, that's average. Some peoples went up, some peoples went down. So, but that's what we're talking about when we say revenue-neutral. As far as the proposed budget that, with the 12 and 1/2 cents, I wanna make sure that I have my numbers correct. 23 cents of that is proposed to go to the school system. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes, sir. I don't have my, it's in that chart that you have.
21 cent is to go to Sheriff's Department, Detention, and 911. 10 cent goes to DSS, Department of Social Services. 4 cents goes to EMS. 4 cents goes to general fund debt. 2 cents goes to the Health Department. And then for everything else, it's paid for by 15 cents. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So Register of Deeds, Tax Office, Administration...
Recreation.
Recreation. All these other things are paid for by 15 cents.
Right. Yes, sir.
Public buildings, maintenance.
So you can cut out all of those things, and you're only going to cancel out just a little bit more than what the tax increase is proposed. So we're seeing a lot, where are these expenses coming in? It's coming in the school system, Sheriff's Department, and a lot of it, I know detention. We've talked about detention, detention, detention. You know, you can't just shave 12 and 1/2 cents off this budget by saying you want to do it without shutting down departments.
That's correct.
So I just wanted to make that comment and ask if my figures were correct, so...
Yes, sir. Those are good points, and as we all, as we know, one thing about Alexander County is most of our employees are in just a few departments. Our largest department by far is Department of Social Services, and it has over 70 employees. And then you have the emergency services, which is, you have Sheriff's Department and Detention and 911, then you have EMS, and you have the Health Department. And after those departments, the numbers fall off pretty radically.
Correct or wrong, but at DSS, about 55% of that personnel cost is non-local funding, roughly.
Yes, sir. That's correct. Yes, sir.
Yeah, when I was mentioning the vendors, one thing that always comes to my mind is insurance. I mean, I know Josh has a background in health insurance, and Ronnie has in property insurance, and you know...
Yes, sir.
All the buildings, vehicles, and things that we own. You know, I'd love to see them review those vendor, or those contracts, to see if there's some potential savings there. I think they would have the expertise on the front end...
Certainly.
...to look at that.
Starting early, started in July...
Next week, yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's...
Well, that's, Rick, I'd just like to say, you know, the county departments, those have to function, but you know, it's the people that's paying the price. And I just, I always like to get the best for my dollar that I can, and I wanna try to do the same thing, you know, for the citizens of Alexander County. And you know, it's a, two digits is something else. But you know, we have to survive. We're gonna continue going, but I think I'd like to, as we talked about before, you know, you've got that line in the sand going forward, and I'd like to go ahead and start next week on budget for next year, to make sure, you know, that everybody's bought into it, and it's kinda like at the house. Power goes off, and it comes back on. Man, everything in the house has been turned on. I'd just like to make sure that everybody, when you leave, you turn your lights off, you shut things down. You know, you think that's not much, but there's savings that we can, you know, that we can get everywhere, and that's what we've gotta start thinking about. You know, myself, all the way down to the, you know, each employee, is not, you know, well, I wanna do this and do that, but you know, we gotta look where each one paying for what's going on. So you know, everybody has to kinda tighten up to make this thing work.
Mr., you're, I mean, you're exactly right. I mean, and the one thing to keep in mind is, you know, and we all know this, you know, we don't like change. You know, change is tough, and whether it's, whether it's not having, using the lights at the ball fields, or power, you know, cutting power back, I can tell you, in the administration building, the county offices, on the weekend, it's pretty warm, 'cause the power's out a lot. So I mean, the air conditioning's cut way back. So I mean, there's a, there's a lot of things we have to do differently. You can't do things the same way and expect better results. You have to do things differently. And it'll take your support and direction, and we'll make it happen.
Mr. French, one question and one comment. The question, whether our tax rate increases 10 cents or 12 and 1/2 cents, how will we, how will we compare to neighboring counties and/or comparative counties?
In your packet, last time, we had that information. I'll pull that slides. Where is that? As far as counties are similar size, Davie County is a county that is, their proposed tax rate this year is point, is 72.8, almost 73 cents. Yadkin County is 66 cents, and Scotland County is $1.03. As far as a penny on the tax rate for those counties I just mentioned, Davie County, a penny on their tax rate is 426, almost $427,000. Alexander County is 254,000. Yadkin County is 252,000. Scotland County is $188,000. Surrounding counties, Wilkes County is 69 cents. Burke County is 68 cents. And Burke County, three years ago, at revale time, raised their property tax rate either 15 or 16 cents. Caldwell County, 60 cents. Catawba County, 57 and 1/2, and Iredell County, 52.75. And those values in those, in the larger counties around us, I mean, it's just, there's just no comparison. Iredell County values for a penny on their tax rate generates $2.1 million. Catawba County, a penny on the tax rate generates 1 point, almost 1.6 million dollars. And in Alexander County, it's $254,000. In Caldwell, it's a penny generates 251,000. Burke, 629,000. Wilkes, 531,000. Basically, at least double, or four or five times, the amount of value in our county.
Well, I'll say another thing about that is, you have to, you can't just look at the property tax rate. You have to figure in sales tax on that. A lot of those counties receive a lot more sales tax than this county does. Do you have, do you happen to have Davie County's sales tax numbers?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay.
So when you look at the 10 cent tax rate versus 12.5, what things are you thinking about that would be cut out of there, that would not be purchased, or would not be done?
With 10 cents, you would have to, I think you'd have to look at reducing the number of vehicles for the Sheriff's Department from four to two. I think you'd have to look at, well, we've already talked about reducing the salary out of the ACA employees that we had talked about that were going in the Sheriff's Department. There's a piece of EMS equipment we'd have to eliminate. We looked at doing bank financing on the capital that we had included, which was the ambulance, the QRV, which the one that we currently is using is very old and outdated. The two sheriff's SUVs, and we had a vehicle for animal services. All those vehicles are, all those replacements are over 200,000-plus miles. That's, I mean, that's some of the things. Mr. Chairman?
So in essence, we're kicking the can down the road.
We are. Yes, sir.
We do that.
That's basically the way I saw it, just, you know...
You know, honestly, I don't think any, it's hard to get excited about a 12 and 1/2 cents, nor a 10, neither one. Neither one feels good. But as I said before, I don't wanna be sitting up here next year looking at another increase. With that being said, if I continue on the budget committee, if you get requests for spending in the 41 million, we won't even have a budget meeting until the numbers get real. To me, it's a waste of our time to sit down with unrealistic numbers.
Right.
And if we end up at 12 and 1/2, this 37 million, that is the line in the sand. And I think we need to look for ways to actually move that line back if we can. I realize there are state mandated things that maybe we don't have control over, but anything we have control over, but you know, my opinion is, we've got vehicles aging out. Every year you wait to replace them, that's a snowball, and it's gonna hit you. I always think it has to be a constant in the budget every year, and you just have to prepare for that. Now, 10 cents doesn't feel good, 12 cents doesn't feel any better, but you know, it's just a time just to set it, and then try like heck to be under on spending and move that money to the fund balance next year, or at the end of this budget year, and strengthen that back up. That's my two cents worth.
Anybody else?
My comment I was gonna make earlier, a few minutes ago. One of my personal frustrations throughout this process has been, has been the timing, and actually how, I guess, how little, how short a period of time we have been working, or diligently working on the budget. Mr. Reese made the comment, we need to start working on next year's budget tomorrow, or whenever this one, as soon as this one is finalized. But part of my frustration, and I don't think I'm saying this strictly from my own vantage point, and I think there are others that share this frustration with me, is that I do believe there's savings to be had, but the urgency of this tax increase came a little too late in the process and in the year for some of those savings to be taken advantage And I do believe that for next year's budget, you know, we've said, well, we think this can be a two-year budget, you know, and then Mr. Campbell asks, well, could it be a four-year I think with turning some screws and tightening some things down, it can definitely be a four-year budget, unless something comes along from Raleigh or DC that, you know, we don't foresee. And I do wish we, I do, I don't know, I wish the severity of the financial situation had been brought to light a little sooner, and maybe we could've, we could've made some decisions that we're not able to make now strictly due to timeframe.
I think part of that, Josh, and you and I've talked about this, is our current budget we're operating on now, and allocation to balance it with fund balance. It's already, in football terms, it's first in 20. So you know, I think we're started out backwards.
Well, I'd like to say, I've got all confidence in our county, the citizens and the people that work for the county, that going forward, I mean, surely we can, if we can just save 2% or 3%, then we can put that, you know, either into the fund balance or to another area to, you know, help offset, but you know, I got a grandson that's four years old, and shoot, he wants to go to ice cream... ice cream store every day. But we don't go every day. You know, you gotta, you know, realize that, you know, this is something that we do special, you know, for a certain time. You know, our county is, from the outside, and they touched on it before, we've been here just a, a few days, and I kind of kid everybody, I just got my seat adjusted, but, you know, I'm just getting things dropped on. I had no idea, you know, really what was going on, the internal workings, but it's been a real enlightening position for me already. But, you know, I can't say that I want to go through this again, you know?
Well, I'd like to make a comment that Commissioner Yoder and myself have been warning this for a couple of years now. And matter of fact, two years ago, I believe we, both of us voted against the budget, wasn't it, two years ago? Because we said we had to do a tax increase then. And last year was kind of a compromise. And want to ask the county manager, as far as if, I, I mentioned, you know, you had to shut down departments. What's, what's the cost if you do lay off people? And I know the answer to this, but I want to ask you so that people do understand. What's the cost if you lay off a person?
Basically talking about three quarters of their salary. Plus, we have a county policy, if you lay someone off, you have to pay them a small portion of their salary, give them 30 days' notice. But the biggest part is what the state law requires.
State law requires us to pay them basically three quarters of their salary until they find another job.
That's right.
Okay. As far as, and, and someone mentioned, you know, shutting the lights off at the ball fields. Alexander County does recreation differently than pretty much any other county that I've looked at, and we spend a lot of money on recreation that I would say other counties don't as far as ball. What, what would it save per year if, if the county just got completely out of recreation and the communities did recreation themselves like in many other counties?
As far as the numbers go, you're talking about a little over a penny on the tax rate.
Okay. So, a penny, 1.25% maybe?
Something like that, yes, sir. Also, some of the things that we do, which are, I think are do, and I know you're not saying that, that we don't, but some of the things that we do that we, we didn't do 10 years ago, but we've been doing it for some time, is we, we do drug testing, we do criminal background checks on all the part-time folks and some of those, all the umpires, referees that we have. And we weren't, there was a time we weren't doing that, and that's been very helpful identifying some people that did not need to be working for us, if you will. But 1.25 is a good way of saying it.
Okay.
What about just kind of kicking this out? Overtime? You know, that's not cutting anybody's job, not closing anything down. Is it, in legality, can we as the board say, no more overtime for anyone?
You can say it, but if someone works past the time, what we, what we do, Commissioner, is that people take comp time off. That's how you compensate them, you don't actually pay them. And the county comp time policy, we ever run a report every two weeks of the number of employees that are running over on comp time. We can't, we have a 40 hours, we have different levels, they have, I have to sign off on them, but I get a report every two weeks with every payroll about comp time. So, the pay in overtime is really not the problem. The problem is, is when somebody has a large amount of time and they leave.
Like we see on these surge amendments.
Like you see all the time. That's the hard thing to deal with. And it's in, basically in two areas. It's not in any, it's, there's a few employees, but, you know, 80 to 90% of it is in two areas.
What two areas?
Which two areas?
The Department of Social Services is a smaller part, but Detention and Sheriff's Department is most of it.
A question, does our policy match, is it matching federal or state policy on the county?
I don't know, there's, it's pretty, what we do is pretty similar to all the surrounding counties and counties our size, it's pretty common the way we handle it, with comp time. We, some counties pay overtime, but we don't.
So, we could be fined or the labor?
No, no. What we do is when someone, we give them time off for that time. Our policy is we give them time off for that time.
If they work eight hours extra?
They get paid for that.
They get?
I mean, they, they'll get eight hours of time off.
They get an eight-hour vacation day? Okay.
Now, what happens is, is if somebody has 200 hours of comp time and they leave us, we got to pay them.
Right.
So, you generally, you want that number down, and we constantly talk to departments about, they're on that number down. We talk with, I talk with DSS every two weeks and review those numbers, and it's a running total, and they give me an update every two weeks of where those people are, and they're always trying to get those numbers down.
Is there a cap on the max they can accrue?
Well, there's, 40 hours is, was our cap, and then we allowed them to accumulate up to 100 hours when they started the NC FAST system. And I think right now, there's just a couple of people that are just a little bit over 100 hours now. And the other departments are, they're individuals that, with their jobs, they have a lot more comp than, comp time than that. They have, some of them have over 400 hours.
But they don't leave? To put that in perspective, 100 hours of comp time is two and a half weeks of salary. Where in private business does any employee, well, need to stay late because I didn't get what I needed done, done? Where in?
Which you, but, but.
I, I mean, I, I understand.
But with, with emergency type services.
Well, sure, oh, sure. I don't mean, you know, I don't mean EMTs.
Yeah, EMS, if they, if they go off at 7 o'clock and they have a call at 5 o'clock and they all end up in Baptist Hospital.
Oh, sure, yeah, right. But I'm, you know, but I'm thinking, you know, other, other departments especially.
Yeah, I'd never made it 28 years if I told my company that.
Well, and if you're in private business, you're working that long, you're creating revenue. That's the difference too, if you're putting in that many extra hours. Or otherwise, you wouldn't be.
And I, and this is, and this may be a stupid statement, but in what other line of work, I mean, is this, you know, comp time and overtime and comp time, it's, you know, it seems to me the employer, the employees are holding the employer to the fire. You know, and where, where, where else in the world does the employee get to, you know, does, does the employee get to make the rules? Well, I guess, you know, there are some unions out there, but, and this is going back to another situation, talking about the comp time, you know, and, and I'm just, I'm in a mood, so I'm just going to say what I want to say. But, you know, the fact that other counties around us do it that way, I don't think that means it's necessarily the best way to do it. I think that's what, you know, that's, that's a good basis for doing what you do, but if there's a better way than Wake of Catawba County, Iredle County, Caldwell County, and Wilkes County are doing it, by God, we need to figure it out. Because they've got more money than we do.
They all treat comp time the same way we treat it, and by law, you can't let, somebody can't work over you, you have to compensate them.
Right.
I mean, that's the public law.
Which I under, you know, which I understand, but I think it makes a lot of sense to tell people you're not working over. Now, I understand in, you know, emergency services, especially EMT, or EMS, excuse me, if an EMT is on a call, I mean, no, we don't expect them to quit getting paid in the middle of giving CPR. I mean, that's crazy. But, you know, in my opinion, if it's not an emergency call, whether it's DSS, Detention, Sheriff's Department, whomever, I mean, recreation, library, doesn't matter to me. I just, I'm just sort of sitting here thinking, unless it's a, unless it's a, unless it's a life or death matter, I mean, I sort of agree with Mr. Reese. I mean, we got to get a handle on, on overtime, some, in some way, shape, or form. Because it seems like we have a budget amendment every single month, and it's always about, it's not adding money.
No.
No, it's always about, you know, throw, putting this much more money to this and that and everything else.
Well, and that comes into play in, like you said, one department specifically that we don't really control, and there's a lot of turnover there. So, I don't know what the legalities of that, if we can even control that. Mr. French, do you know?
No, sir, you do not. Yeah, I mean, you don't control it.
Okay. Got to pay for it, but you don't. But you're accountable.
That's right.
It's always fun to be in charge of paying for things you can't control.
Yes, sir.
Not that I want to control it, but.
Actually, I think the less things we're involved, we have our hands in, I'd be shrek.
One thing that you are doing that is taking a step in that direction is not filling positions.
Well, and over time, that, it'll be lift there through attrition. But, I mean, you know, this is an elephant, you're going to have to eat bites.
Certainly.
That'll help.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Gentlemen, I think there's two scenarios here tonight. I've heard some of you say you'd like to see 10 cent, some 12 and a half cent. And personally, I mean, I'm not going to wait on any of you to make the motion, okay? I'm going to make the motion myself. Let chips fall where the bay. But I've sat here and I said last year, and I think beginning of the year, I came straight out and said that with revale, we were looking at a 10 cent tax increase. That was not counting whatever the adjustment had to be for revale. I said then it would be 10 cent. I knew it was coming, I saw it. We went two years without buying any deputy cars for our deputies, and I think the last one we got, I think, I think Lieutenant, Mr. Moore, if I call you with the wrong profession, I'm sorry, I know you're a deputy. But I think the last car we got was your car that we got on a state grant. So, for your position for the, the, something we were doing under the governance program, and we equipped that car, and we had set up a thing where for, when I came on the board, my thing was to push for them getting four cars a year. When things went south, then we didn't do the four cars a year. I think that was a mistake. I still think it's a mistake. Also, two years ago, we implemented a program of buying an ambulance once a year because of the mileage that we put on our ambulance, and not only that, we don't have a hospital, but we have very professional EMTs that take care of Sheriff of County, and it's only right to be providing them with ambulance. And I don't think that we should be financing another ambulance, and there we can have the capital to buy, to purchase that ambulance. And we also put in the budget $22,000 to continue a program here at CVCC. That needs to be continued to look after these folks whose funding was cut and it's not there, and we decided that we'd put that in the budget. So, for a year, I have sat here and I have known that we were going to have a tremendous budget increase this year. And I knew it was coming. Now, there's things you can do, surely that you can cut funding here, you can cut funding there, we can cut some resources as far as each department's concerned. But seeing how you guys just got here and everything, I'm making motion at this time that we pass a budget of, of a tax increase of 12.5 cent that has been recommended by the county manager. And Commissioner Campbell, if I'm wrong here, I think we pretty much felt like that, and I'm not trying to put you in this motion either, sir.
Sorry.
But I think the Finance Committee felt like, based on everything that we discussed with Mr. French, that 12.5 cent would be the ideal position for us to be in so that we could put more funding into our fund balance and also take care of the critical needs in the county. And I think, I think we can do that. I think if you look at the budget, I think you can see where we're going to, we're going to put a sewer line down NC 90, which maybe I'll never see what impact it'll have on the families or the economic development of Alexander County, but I think that sewer line will pay great dividends in the near future, especially with the rail line down NC 90 East. Therefore, that's why I make that 12.5 cent tax rate, and as I say, I make that in form of a motion.
The longest motion mankind, but.
Well, I just wanted to explain myself, sir. I apologize, but I feel, I don't like taxes any more than anybody else does. I'm not a property tax person, sir.
I will reluctantly second that motion with the caveat, the line is drawn in the sand, we do the vendor contracts, and I'm not sitting up here next year, I'm backing up on spending if anything. Worst case scenario, the spending is where it is today. Best case, it's 700 to a million dollars less.
Yes.
And I'm not thrilled at all with the situation, but at this point, I think it's the labor we got to pull. There's money in there for our school system, additional funds that they've requested. And certainly, they have challenges figuring out their new normal with 596 less students than we had several years ago. So, that's the longest second on demand kind, so.
So, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say just a couple of things. I want to agree with Commissioner Campbell. I'm really hesitant to vote for this, but I want to see us really try to do some things next year, starting next month, to implement some efficiencies. And I know several of us have talked about some of these things, and I think we can do them. Just a matter of having the will to do it and making it happen. As far as the school system, you mentioned, they've got nearly 600 less students. They've got a lot of challenges going forward as well. How does that, you know, people say, well, they got 600 less students. How does that, you know, impact their, their budget? Well, they get funding from the state based on the number of students they have. So, when their students are going down, their funding is going down, and they're looking for the county taxpayers to fill that in. And I'm kind of drawing the line in the sand there, too. I, I need to see some efficiencies and a plan, what they've got planned going forward before we commit any, any more county taxpayer money. Because their income is going to be going down, most likely. And I agree with Mr. Yoder, I want to mention the deputy cars. We've, we've, we've got four in this budget. If, if we can do it, if we can save some money over the coming year with some help from the Sheriff's Department, I'd like to see us figure out a way to buy them two more vehicles before July 1st of next year. They need it, and we need to figure out a way to do it.
Any further discussion?
One, one other thing I'd say.
Okay, sir.
You know, to me, it's not about whether or not we buy one new ambulance or whether or not we buy two cars for Sheriff's Department versus four cars for Sheriff's Department. Because I agree whole, I mean, I agree wholeheartedly, we need to make sure that our, you know, we have, we need to replace ambulances, we need to replace police cars. You know, I'm 110% in favor of the county funding the compensatory education program in this, I mean, in, in this, in this building. You know, I'm a bit, you know, I'm a big picture guy, and the items that make the, make a difference, you know, that change the rate, the rate, the increase rate from 12 and a half cents to 10 cents, you know, we've kind of singled out, okay, well, we can cut, you know, we can cut to new vehicles for the Sheriff's Department, and we can, you know, finance an ambulance, the ambulance, and we can do this and do that, and it saves us a couple You know, I'm, I want to see us, I want to see us look at, and, and I know this is what You know, I'm, I wanna see us, I wanna see us look at, and I know this is what, this is what Commissioner Campbell's talking about and Mr. Mayberry's talking about. But I, I just, I want us to look at the big picture, which means looking at the big ticket items. Not looking at, we can save $30,000 here, we can save $20,000 there, or we, you know, we need to be looking at where can we, you know, is there a possibility of saving hundreds of thousands of dollars? Because, because there are, are and always will be annual expenditures that are, are they 100% required? No, but do I want, do I want my child picked up in an ambulance with 290,000 miles on it and worry about whether it's gonna get to the hospital or not? Absolutely not. You know, do, from a school system perspective, two years from now, I'm gonna have four kids in Alexander County schools. Do I want, you know, do I want, you know, do we wanna, do we wanna be sitting here fussing over $20,000 for the school system? No. I just, I think there, there are, we've gotta look at, you know, we've gotta look at the big picture. We've gotta look at, are there ways to do things differently? Are there crazy ideas that might just work? Before I left home, my wife said, "Go with your gut." Because she knows how, I mean, I don't know why this has bothered me as much as it has. But in, in summary, I just, I really want us to look at everything. I want us to look at big picture all the way down to mowing the grass at the Bethlehem Branch Library. Because I see them out there, because my office is next door. And though, you know, and I'm not saying they're not doing a great job, because they, you know, they do a good job. But there are 37,000 people in Alexander County. Not all of, not all of which are property owners. And I understand the absolute need to raise the tax rate. But it's hard, you know, but when we say, well, the revenue neutral because, because values went down, there are a lot of people in this county that their values didn't go down. My value didn't go down.
Yeah, my value didn't.
On my house. You know what that means? I just get to pay more. Not that I get to pay the same amount. My neighbor's value didn't go down either. And, and another, and I'm gonna hush in a minute, sorry. You know, and another thing that is frustrating about this, about this, and I didn't realize, when I, when I decided, well, when I decided I wanted to be a county commissioner when I grew up, I didn't realize how little authority we were, I mean, I had no idea how little authority we actually have. We can set tax rate, or excuse me, we can set property tax rate, but other than that, we have zero control over our revenues. You know? I mean, and how unfair is it that the only thing we can control only costs people money, it only costs property owners? I mean, you know, we're sitting here slack, you know, it's, it's frustrating, let me just say, it's frustrating.
That was the longest discussion in the history of America. Mr. Chairman, I...
It took an, excuse me, I was just gonna say, it took an act of Congress. Mr. French can vouch for this, for us to get the quarter sales tax that we could even get, put on the, on the, on the, for the citizen to vote on that quarter cent. I didn't think we were ever gonna get, and then we asked for a penny and we got a quarter.
Ask for two cents, maybe you got one.
That's what we should've done, yes, sir. Mr. Commissioner Mayberry, go ahead, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just really quickly, and Commissioner Leo, Leo said, you know, he's a big picture guy, and, and I guess I am too, but we don't want to, you know, you can nickel and dime yourselves and your departments to death. You wanna make sure they're efficient and they're run efficient, and you got the right people in place. But what this county needs is to increase its income and revenues from sales tax.
Amen.
That's where we're getting killed. And that's where we got killed when, I believe it was 2008, when that changed over. And it's, it's been a struggle ever since. And we have got to find ways to increase the income and revenue from sales tax.
Thanks.
Well, I guess I'll be the one that wraps it up, but, yeah, it's the hardest thing I've ever really had to do. And I had a lot of people calling me, I'd just say no. That's easy to do, but just as Commissioner Leo touched on, there's really very little authority that we have as county commissioners, the money comes through, we gotta see where it's going. And yeah, it's just amazing. And just as Commissioner Mayberry said, sales tax is what we need. But pretty much, we gotta get the whole state of North Carolina to go with us. I'm saying that, you know, yeah, little county Alexander can raise our sales tax rate. And, you know, at the state level, they're setting on supposedly $400 million. I'm like, hey, there's 100 counties, the math's easy for me. But that's not gonna happen either. And, you know, in the meantime, I guess I'm pretty much a day-by-day guy. The big picture I look at, but I like to look at, you know, today, let's make it as efficient, work as good as we can, and go on to the next day. But, you know, if this is what we need to do, then we need to implement it. But I'd like to spread the word, too, any department, you know, if you're not operating efficiently, eventually, we're gonna find you, maybe a little bit. But, you know, let's everybody take ownership, that's the big thing with my company, is ownership in it. What I'm doing, my product, that's where everybody's looking at. And we need to be proud of what we're doing and saving the money. A lot of people may not like that, but, you know, the taxpayer, especially the guy that's just, you know, barely got the money, or lady who's just probably got the money to pay their property tax, they want us to be efficient, making sure where it's going. And that's what we, you know, are gonna have to do. And I think if we start early in this thing, you know, we can make a difference. And I don't think 2% or 3% is gonna kill anybody on any budget, you know, anywhere going forward. And when you put it all together, two pennies, you know, add up, pennies make dollars. And that's what we gotta, you know, keep in mind. And that's my discussion.
Okay. All right, call for the question. All those in favor, indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, motion carries unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much.
I just want you to know I just about didn't.
Just go back and throw up.
You think it was easy for me? I, you know, I don't like property tax anymore than anybody else does, I, you know, so, anyway.
And the worst thing is, my wife's gonna be mad at me.
I'm sorry. Item, item number two on the agenda, Budget Ordnance Amendments Number 54 through 57, County Manager, Mr. Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this, these are the last amendment, budget amendments for the 14, 15 fiscal year. 54 is to amend the general fund budget to, a budget for required year-end accruals for the first payroll to be paid in July 2015. 55 is to budget for the required year-end accruals for the first payroll to be paid in July 2015. 6, so it ties into something we spoke about earlier, some of you spoke about earlier, is to increase the budget for the self-insured group medical due to the actual claims paid, which exceed the estimated insurance premiums charged to county departments. And last but not least, is the budget for transfer of funds from the jail project fund to the fiscal, to fiscal year 2016 general fund budget. The transfer will use money from the January 2011 jail loan proceeds for fiscal year 2016 interest payment on the debt. And those are the budget amendments. I'll be, I'll try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, about the budget amendments.
Are there any retaining motions?
I move to approve budget ordinance amendments number 54, 55, 56, and 57, and I have a question about 57. I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second, we're already way up there anyways.
Second, is there any discussion?
Mr. French, the budget ordinance amendment number 57, the transfer the jail project fund to the general fund budget, we've talked about that. One question I haven't asked you, though, yet, the, the, what, what would happen if we did not transfer that money? Or, I mean, could we just pay that back immediately?
If we don't do it this way, we'll have to take 200, that amount of money out of general fund.
Okay.
So you can do it either way, but you could do it this way, and then you'll do the same, sort of the same difference later if you address the...
Okay.
Okay.
That's it.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, go ahead, sir. Just, I mean, just so, on, on page 54, or number 54, excuse me.
Yes.
This is to, this is, this is basically for the first, first payrolls of the 15, 16 budget, which would be utilized that.
Yes, sir.
That's, okay.
You have, we have days, and as we go into the next fiscal year, we, we're paid every two weeks. So you have a period of time where you have several days in both this, you know, in both this touch, and that's where the accrual comes in. Cover those costs.
Okay.
And actually, it's a amendment to the current budget.
Right. So that you won't have a lapse in the...
That's right.
This is basically just an accounting...
It is.
Right, okay. Any other questions? All those in favor indicate raising your right hand, those opposed likewise, the motion carries, thank you very much. We've already taken care of the budget amendment, do we need, you need a formal motion on that?
Budget ordinance, we, we, I took it that, by what you actually took about...
That's what I meant, based on the budget amendment you presented for us. So that's why I said 12.5% for the budget amendment, so we've covered that.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Board of appointments and reappointments, CBCC Board of Trustees, County Manager, Mr. French.
What? Can I see what you're gonna write on?
I've got it here, if you'd like me to take care of it.
Okay, it's to appoint Jeremy Fortner to a four-year term at CBCC, a reappointment.
I'll make the motion, the reappointment of Jeremy Fortner, I think we're very fortunate to have him serve on that board, outstanding individual.
I'll second.
Motion's made, second, is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate raising your right hand, those opposed likewise, the motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Item number five, due to the fact that we're not gonna vote on the budget on June the 22nd, cancel the regular scheduled meeting for June the 22nd, are there any retaining motions?
I'll make that motion, because I'll be the one that's not here.
Motion's made to cancel the June 22nd meeting, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second, is there any discussion?
Does that mean we won't have a week, we'll have a week with no meeting?
Week without a meeting, yes. So, any discussion? All those in favor indicate raising your right hand, those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Other business, County Managers' Report, Mr. French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just wanna mention that our next regular meeting is July 13th. So we don't have, this is the last meeting of June, so we go until almost mid-July before we meet again, so July 13th, 2015, here. And we, Mr. Chairman, we have a need for a closed session.
Okay, sir.
County attorney.
All right, and also, gentlemen, you know, usually, after adoption of the agenda, we normally have an opportunity for commissioners to give a report. And at this time, since we didn't have that on the agenda, I'm gonna ask if there's any commissioner that'd like to give a report on anything at this time.
Go ahead, sorry. Okay. This is item information and also an invitation to, Mr. French and commissioners, on Wednesday, July, excuse me, that's the wrong email, hang on just a second. Do, 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 there we go, sorry about that. This coming Wednesday, June 17th, from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. at Mitchell Gold and Bob Williams Lulu's Child Enrichment Center. The Alexander County Partnership for Children is pleased to announce a SHAPE NC demonstration site celebration at Lulu's Child Enrichment Center. Come join us as we celebrate their prestigious recognition. Lulu's Child Enrichment Center is only one of six SHAPE NC demonstration sites across the entire state of North Carolina. Please share this with your county. This is a, as many of you know, Mitchell Gold, Bob Williams has an on-site daycare facility. And it is phenomenal. And it has been chosen as a SHAPE NC demonstration site, which basically means through the North County Partnership for Children, there will be many, many, many folks from around the state coming to actually tour and look at the facility, how it's, how things are done. And, and they're basically an example of what a daycare facility should be. There is a, like I say, Wednesday, the 17th, there is a little, I don't wanna say ribbon cutting, but basically a little, and they, and as a member of the Alexander County Department of Children's Board of Directors, I'll invite each of you to attend that if you can. If you would, please let me know at the end of the meeting if you can be there tomorrow at 4 o'clock, because they have asked that we RSVP.
Mr. Chairman, I have a report. Senior Center, Mr. Mayberry touched on that in their budget. I got some numbers here, just kinda the, the first quarter of the year. And this is for the people that, you know, have come and attended things that are there. These are just unduplicated. In January, in Taylorsville, there's 350, Bethlehem, 89, Stony Point, 43. February, 403 visited Taylorsville, 60 in Bethlehem, seven in Stony Point. March, there was 500 in Taylorsville, 110 in Bethlehem, Stony Point, 28 in Stony Point. They just kinda started an annex there. And also, they're, they helping do a lot of things, there was a Medicare Part D drug plan. 457 people were assisted by the senior center. That coming, that accounted for a savings of $373,000 to the senior citizens of Alexander County just by them, you know, being there, being open and being able to help. They do a lot of things, you know, the screenings, the cardiovascular things, and all of those that are, you know, that are there. And that's something that, you know, I think we take kinda for granted, I did, before I really got involved in what was going on, I'm on that committee. And I thank Ms. Woody for, you know, being here tonight and attending, seeing kinda what's going on. And, yeah, that's a good thing for the senior citizens, and we're all getting there every day. And also, the Memorial Day thing for the DAV, I'm on that committee. They had, they said the largest turnout at this one that there had been in years. And, you know, it's something that, you know, we kinda forget about, you know, the veterans, and they're the senior citizens, too. The things that they've done for us, the freedoms we have today, being able to be here, voting on things. You know, some things we may not like, but we have freedom to do that. And we can thank our armed forces and DAV for doing that. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mayberry?
I'll make it as brief as I can. I'll make it as brief as I can. I've been serving on this board for six and a half years, and I know that, know that no one here wants to see a property tax rate increase, and I know no one wanted to vote for it. But sometimes you got to do what you got to do. Even if you're uncomfortable with it, you have to make the right decisions, and I want to commend this board for making the right decision. This is the most like-minded board that I've served on in this six and a half years. Everybody's on the same page, they've got the same goals, and, and we're going to move forward. And I appreciate all of you and appreciate all the work you've done. I will say that our, our stock market now is, you know, soaring, the unemployment rate's down, but if you look at our labor petition, participation rate, it's the lowest now since the Carter administration, which is not good. And that means that we have fewer people working in the workforce as a percentage of, of population since 1977, and that's not a good thing. And so we've got to do all that we can do to make sure that the citizens of this county get the services that they need at the most cost-efficient way possible. And I know that everyone has thrown a lot of ideas out there, and I appreciate all your hard work, and this is, this board is tough to serve on, and, and you got to make tough decisions. Thank you.
Very good. Gentlemen, before we adjourn, we need to have a closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Paragraph A, 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6, to prevent disclosure of confidential information as it pertains to economic development, contractual, and personnel. And we will re-adjourn for the primary purposes of adjournment only, and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. The motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen.